Hello, my name is Kristen Rogers. I am the Chair of the Harwood Unified Union School District. Thank you for joining us. We start each meeting with public comment. Anyone from the public can speak on a school-related matter they would like to. Each speaker is given up to three minutes. Usually, we are able to hear from everyone that would like to speak. If for some reason there are more speakers than time allows, I will draw names. At the two and a half minute mark, I will let you know you have 30 seconds left. And at the three-minute mark, I will let you know your time is up, so we can go on to the next speaker. If you have more to share with us than three minutes allows, we invite you to email the entire board at cen-husdboard@husd.org. Please know that while the board does not respond during public comment, we do always listen carefully to what is being said. If you are on Zoom and would like to speak, please click on the raised hand button. Let me give just one second. We don't have anybody in the public here. Just one, one, a couple more seconds. Okay, I'm not seeing any, anybody from the public that would like to speak, so we're gonna go ahead and move on. I'd be looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Bobby, is there a second? Is there any objection or abstentions to approving the agenda? Okay, not hearing any, that will pass. So the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna do some highlights. So it looks like Moretown had their Walk to School Day on October 11th. We're just getting caught up on some past things. And then Brookside, I just want to thank Sarah, the principal, for sending along these pictures. The third and fourth grader, fourth grade teams hiked in Little River State Park, building community perseverance and connecting with the outdoors. And then Fiston, the second, third graders explored parts of a flower and honed their scientific drawing skills. And then Waitsfield also had their Walk to School Day. And it looks like they had some people that biked over a mile, so that is pretty cool. I think it's really great that our community schools really take part in that, so that's, that's awesome. So next, we're going to move on to Board Report. So the first one up is the students, so I'll let you guys take that away. Second, we're bringing that all up.
Alright, so as you notice, we have two new students with us. These are two new student reps, Ellie and Lincoln, and they're just gonna introduce themselves real quick, so Ellie can go first. Hi, my name's Ellie. I'm a junior at Harwood. I'm involved in a lot of things around here, the music department, I'm on the track team, and I also just do other things, like hang out with friends. Yeah, I'm excited to be representative for the community that I'm in, and I'm excited to hopefully make some change.
Hello, my name is Lincoln Dice. I'm a junior at Harwood. I'm really excited to better improve Harwood and its environment, and I'm big into sports and hanging out with friends.
We're just bringing the Board Report back up. Hope everybody enjoyed this nice weather that we had today. I think there was some sun outside, maybe? Oh, here we go.
Right, we got some. At Harwood right now, our fall sports, our seasons are close to coming to an end, but a lot of our teams have just started playoffs. Me and Lincoln are on the boys soccer team, and we just won earlier today, and our next game's on Saturday.
Our Battle of the Bands just happened last Friday, and it really went really well. I think we had participation from five different schools, including middle school. Yeah, it went really well.
Our Harwood Bass Fishing Team just recently won state championships, I think for the first time. I have a lot of friends on that Bass Fishing Team, and they were pretty hyped about it.
Alright, so our, oh, yeah, there we go. Our goals for this year are trying to implement student voice further as we present bonds and strengthen the student knowledge on bonds and what bonds are about. I feel like last year there was kind of, or two years ago, I think, there was kind of some misinformation with that big bond about what the money was used for and what it can be used for. So we kind of just wanna navigate that and try to reduce the amount of misinformation going out to the student body. We also wanna advocate for things through the bond that are more directed towards a better education, resources for education, like through clubs and exploring future educational paths, kind of stuff like that. Through that, we want to know how the Board best receives information about this stuff, whether it be through slideshow, survey data. If anyone has opinions, we would greatly appreciate that, just so we can bring the data back in a sophisticated way where everyone can see it clearly. And, um, yeah.
This is basically our plan of action for the year. We're gonna start out by interviewing students through like videos, surveys, TA announcements. We're basically just wanna get like, uh, we wanna like get information from the students to be able to share with the Board, and we'll bring that information back. And obviously, the Board will like continue to make its decisions, but with like thinking about what the students had to say about what they think the school needed. And then from there, we're just gonna be sharing with the students, like Naomi said, like the accurate information about what's going on. And then we'll be able to share again, uh, how like everyone in the school is like responding to what we're doing on the Board. So I guess our job this year is almost to be the middleman and make sure that the student information gets to the Board and the Board information gets sent out to the students in the appropriate way.
If anyone has feedback to give us on how you wanna receive that data or any comments or questions, feel free to ask. Any?
Yeah, I think that first of all, just kudos for asking that question. That's a really insightful question. I think that I would appreciate hearing stories. So, you know, I think getting some survey data and things like that and some sort of, you know, breakdowns and percentages, that's, that's useful. But hearing students tell why things are important to them in their own voice, I think for me is the most powerful. So maybe if, you know, if you have some themes that emerge and then you have some stories, I think the idea of collecting some, some video interviews and things like that, that's a really cool idea. Or if some of you wanna share your personal stories that kind of illuminate what the data's showing, I think that would be great. And thank you, and welcome to the new members.
Uh, Tori, then Ashley.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, surveys, kind of like graphs, that would probably be the most helpful, just so we can have like numbers and an understanding. Granted, I don't have full guidance on like what kind of questions to ask, so I trust you guys to figure that out.
Hi, um, first, I wanna say thank you for being interested in the bond. I think that's fantastic, and I'm on that committee, so I'm curious to hear all what you guys can bring to that. I also wanna just point out that we have invited Will Burks onto the bond group as sort of a student liaison, so any work you wanna do with him would also be good. He's, uh, he's already kind of involved a little bit, so it would be great to have you all, you, the kids kind of work together on that. And also, thanks to the new people for joining the Board. Good for you, thanks.
Any other questions or feed? Oh, Marlena, do you have your hand up? Yep, sorry, go right ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add also, welcome to the Board, the new school body members. And two, just a second, what Life was saying, surveys are great. It's good to have the numerical data. And also, from my experience, people walk away with a feeling and stories provoke that, and the feeling is what lasts, so it'd be great to have that as well.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Just wanna say, I think this presentation was really good, and I think you're heading on the, you're heading in the right direction. I don't, I, I'm fine with what all the other Board members have said as far as ideas for getting information back to us. But I definitely think this presentation was, was really well thought out, and so thank you for, and thank you to the new Board members for stepping up.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, and welcome to the new Board members, Ellie and Lincoln, thank you for stepping up. And there's always yummy snacks usually, and usually candy, usually I have, there's candy here too, so. Maybe in a few weeks there will be. We're gonna move on to Superintendent Report, so Mike, did you?
I have the report in the, a link to the agenda, and I did wanna highlight some of the items on there, including the annual October enrollment. The numbers look good this year, our October enrollment. Last year, we were, if you take a look at the report, last year, we were right around, make sure my numbers correct, but we were right around sixteen, our K, our K-12 numbers were right around sixteen nineteen. This year, we're at sixteen oh five, so that's a difference of fourteen, which when you take a look statistically, that's, that's not a big change from last year. I think we've pretty much held steady at buildings. We brought, uh, people have been watching the last couple of years, the number of eighth graders who come into Harwood. We have an eight, we, we had a pretty large number come in. We also, I think it's important to note, we lost a large class, a larger class last year. We had a hundred and thirty, and that was replaced with a hundred and twenty-two. And when you look at the outgoing class and the incoming kindergarten class, we had a hundred and twenty-five graduates and brought in a hundred and twenty-three kindergarten students. So I think that was also some very good numbers, so take a look through that. And I'm happy to come back and discuss it tonight or revisit it in greater detail at a later meeting. Also, I wanted to point out that we continue our work with Diane Carrera. She's, uh, she worked with us last year when we were working through a lot of the restraint and seclusion information. She recently spent two full days here, two weeks ago. The first day was working with John Berliner, Mandy Catterer, to develop our own internal program that we'd like to start at Brookside, and there's some things we can already start this year. But that would also eventually include beginning to train some of our own behavior specialists to work with students and try to have a less reliance on outside providers. And she then spent the next day visiting two of the schools to giving them more information and responding to some of their questions. We have her, uh, we have a contract with her for this year. She's gonna be at our November faculty, K-12 faculty in service and do some sessions for faculty, which was a request from teachers from last year for her to come back to this year's program. So that work will be going, ongoing through the year. I did also mention, we, we have, I, I planned to put out to our two local newspapers, the letter from the Board and the dates for the bond input sessions coming up in another month. And also encourage you to look at the school profile for Harwood. They listed this year all the, the schools where seniors were accepted to last year. I know that's also something I hear as a concern, how do our students get into good colleges? And I think when you look through that list on the profile, you will see that yes, indeed, our high school, our Harwood seniors get into some excellent schools, and so take a look at that. Also, uh, we, we, there has been a lot of contact from various communities to my office regarding the eclipse. You know, Waterbury is doing a lot of advertising. If you look at the hotels, hotels are already filled for April 8th. And the, the peak of the eclipse is supposed to be right around our dismissal time, when kids would be on buses and on the road. So I am gonna make a modification to the schedule and have a, have an early release day on that day. And then finally, if Kelly pulls up the picture, today was a busy day. When, 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 uh, when I was hired by the district and started to visit, I was just very impressed with the students, our student voice, particularly our students at Harwood who have used the Harkness method that we've talked about before and had some programming. So I talked it up so much that the group asked to come and visit. So they are in Vermont for three days, and we had a group of zooming in and out. Just keep it there, just keep it there. So this is a group, we had fourteen superintendents from Lancaster's, Lancaster-Lebanon County's visit today. And this is a group with the superintendents and the teachers who, some of, some of the teachers who hosted them. So we, uh, we, we gave them an overview in, at this table this morning. And special thanks to not just our Harwood teachers who helped to organize it, Adam Sargent and Eve Baranati, but also our two recently retired teachers, Kathy Cadwell, who really brought the practice to Harwood, and Kate Staus, who was also another big advocate. They were here, they gave a presentation. And the stars of the show though were our students. We had four students who went through the Harkness Leadership Program, May Murphy, Kelsey O'Brien, Atticus Ellis, and Libby Spina, who spoke to the group this morning. And then the group observed classes for blocks two, three, and four. They were treated to the phenomenal Harwood student lunch, so they ate, they went through the cafeteria line or the salad bar and had lunch with everyone else, and it was a really good day. So a lot of good feedback already, and wanted to thank our students and our faculty for being such gracious hosts. And then finally, we, we do have, uh, the students mentioned we have a state championship bass fishing team. We also have our, our annual Harwood Teachers of the Year as part of the State Teachers of the Year program. Last year, we talked to the Board about recognizing students and teachers who were recognized at the state level. So we have a group of students and we have two teachers that I wanted to see if the Board would like me to invite to a meeting for a formal recognition.
So, right? I would like that. Yeah, for sure.
I will, I will work with the Board chair, and we will find a time.
Have any questions? And again, if you're on Zoom land and I miss you, just yell at me. I haven't been here in a month, so a little rusty. Any? Say something. That was a lot of superintendents. I was expecting five.
Well, I, I shared with, with the group that, uh, it, it, one of the things I love about Vermont is that we're a small state. We have about six hundred and fifty thousand residents in Vermont. Lancaster County has sixteen school districts and five hundred and fifty thousand residents. So it's about, it's about the size of Vermont, so, uh, so there, there, there were sixteen, and there's also some superintendents from Lebanon County, which is the county directly north.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on to discussion. So our first thing is we're gonna get a presentation on personnel recruitment and retention, which is one of the things that at our school board retreat kind of came up to the surface as something the Board wanted to know more about. So we have Tanya Cheney here, who is the Director of Human Resources.
That's correct, and if you don't mind me doing, doing a brief introduction, prior to my hire, the Board had added the position of HR Director to take away, a, a lot of the previous superintendent did a lot of personnel work, so it's part of the goal was to take kind of that ground-level work and centralize it, but also to look ahead, especially as schools, not just in Harwood, not just in Vermont, but around the country have had a challenge with hiring, recruitment, and retention. So, uh, uh, my predecessor had advertised it, and we had two applicants. We were not able to successfully hire, we, we learned very quickly that there's not a lot of people who were with that, who had the credentials, who were looking to work in schools. So I heard that from some other colleagues around Vermont. We had one person who we offered a position to, and that person used the offer as leverage to, uh, to her, to the current employer to get a higher salary. So we lost that person, but we also had a very talented payroll individual, Tanya Cheney, who was working on her, her National Human Resources Certification. Received that last year, so we did move her into that position. And we have another person who's a district resident, who has a lot of payroll experience, who moved into that position. So, so we're happy to have Tanya, and she is just, uh, she, she is creating a position and workflows that have never been, uh, never existed before in the district. So she'll talk to you a little bit about what she's doing now and her, her desires for the future.
Thank you for having me. I'll start by just telling you a little bit about what I've been doing the last several months as I step into this new position that I, as Mike said, I am creating, cause it didn't exist previously. I've been training my replacement for the payroll and benefit specialist, and we also have a new admin assistant to Mike, so that is been a challenge, cause she came to us from the school. So we are working on some new processes and getting her trained in what her new role is. I am in the process of attending HHB and Title IX trainings, and recently went to the Vermont Charm Conference in Burlington to just keep up to date on new rules and regulations that are coming out and to network and learn from all of the other HR specialists in the state. We, this summer, implemented a new employee onboarding system, which has been very helpful. Employees get a checklist electronically, and they're able to produce all of their forms to the payroll department electronically, and then they just come in to finalize their background checks, so that's very helpful. It's also implementing a file system electronically, so eventually, we will be able to get rid of all of our paper employee files that we have at Central Office. So that's been a huge project that we did this summer. After implementing the employee onboarding, we have started to implement applicant tracking. So employees will have a place they can go to apply for all of our open positions. The nice thing about applicant tracking is they'll also give us a place where our internal applicants can apply for positions. So that'll all be contained into one system. So we're about halfway through that process. We're hoping that by the time we get to hiring season, that'll be fully functional. And then, as Mike alluded to, we're looking at our employee processes with, from starting at the hire all the way through to when somebody retires, to streamline those processes and really set where and who's gonna be handling what. The goals that we have set for myself is to really work on our recruitment strategies going into hiring season. We have noticed that we are lacking subs, and we're really needing subs for the schools as we come into flu season, sick time. So we are going to start by purchasing some lawn signs to put in front of the schools that are advertising that we are looking for subs with how to apply and who to call if they have any questions. We are also working with our administrators to make sure that we have accurate job descriptions for all of our current positions, so that everybody knows what's expected of them when they're looking at our open positions. And then we're continuing to streamline the onboarding and offboarding process.
Same, I have any questions, comments? Go ahead, Kelly.
Can you explain what HHB is?
HHB is the hazing, harassing, bullying, um, training that all of our administrators go through. So I'm also attending that, so that I know the difference and understand what they do when they get those complaints at the school level.
The state mandated, uh, there's a law related to that, that's state mandated, that's also in Board policy. Title IX is a federal process, and, and the statewide, the number of Title IX complaints has increased drastically and is a very, very long, very detailed process that must be followed to the T. Right now, our Title IX Coordinator is John Berliner, is our Director of Special Services. John's plate is overflowing with his special education responsibilities, and it makes sense to transition that work to Tanya. So as she mentioned, uh, she has to go through some training sessions. John is also including her in any complaints that he receives when he has a con, when he has a conversation with the principal, to interview the principal, to talk about the process. He's including Tanya as well, so she can observe for this year, so that our goal is to transition her into that responsibility for next year.
And a couple of quick questions. One is, are you thinking about or coming up with any kind of ideas for teacher recruiting? And then, second thing is, is there a list somewhere, or are you thinking about creating a list of staff that can, maybe can teach different things? So maybe you have a staff member that's a middle school teacher, but they're also licensed for elementary or vice versa, that if you had to, for recruiting purposes, you could potentially move people around?
The recruitment process, um, I'm looking at, you know, posting jobs on a different platform. So I'm looking at, indeed, posting them there, so that we have that in addition to our school spring. And I wanna work with some of the different entities, the commerces around, because I know they have lots of job fairs. So I'm looking at maybe setting up some booths at some job fairs to get our name out there that we are hiring when we have the hiring processes. I'm not sure if there's a list currently of who has dual degrees at the Central Office, but that is definitely something we could create.
Oh, go ahead, Naomi.
This is kind of a random question, but if there's, oh, I don't know if you know the answer to this, sorry. If there's a teacher who's like, has to go out on like leave or something, and we don't have a long-term sub, do you know what happens then? Like if there's a class going on, and there's no long-term sub, do you know what like the procedure for that is?
Try to recruit, and so there have been some examples and some harder-to-find areas where that, that is, that is something that's occurring. We, number one, try to find something. We, we can also offer to existing teachers to pay them, uh, their hourly per diem rate to teach, and by contract, teachers have to have a preparation period. But if a teacher agrees to teach during that period of time and be paid, we can do that as well. It's not ideal for the teacher, because they do need their time, but a lot of times, people will fill in and help out in that way. A last resort is to, a last resort at, at any school, but an option is always to have a virtual component to that course. But again, that's not something we'd like to do at AOME, so we, we try to work really hard. So I know there's, there's one person in particular we're working on right now, one position, and I know the principals are looking at some other options, including asking other teachers that they're willing to do that for extra pay for a set period of time.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. This is very informative.
Walked in and I told her she had to sit beside the board chair and she said, oh, no.
Okay, so next discussion item is going to be budget. And as I said in the leadership report, we are going to be designating time at every single meeting from now until we, as a board, approve a budget. So Lisa, do you want to go ahead?
I updated my, in my report, I updated some numbers and actually hot off the press, we just received an email today regarding health insurance. So health insurance final numbers on average across all of our plans are coming in at a 16.17% increase, which is 62% of our benefit number. And that number, remember, salary and benefits are 72% of our total operation budget. So right now I'm budgeting an increase of 16.1%, and that's over $5.8 million for benefits, just for health benefits alone. So in my report, you'll see an updated number. So with that updated number of 16%, benefits across, so benefits right now I have under fiscal year 25 proposed budget, benefits are $9.9 million, which is 12.92% increase. And in that benefit number, we have the health insurance that went up 16, dental insurance, workman's comp, all of those things roll up into the benefits. So you know, again, that's the only hard number I have in these projections. There are assumptions in here and we won't know until closer to December 1st, what those, those numbers are, insurance numbers, what our yield would be, what our per pupil rate will be. So once I start getting those numbers, then we'll, you know, I'll start putting those into the scenarios. But right now, this is with assumptions and the health insurance. We're looking at a 6.89% increase to our bottom line over last year. Now, if we were to roll, there's $1.1 million in our funding for ARP, Ester funding. As a reminder, that funding ends September 30th, 2024, so next September. And we have 7.9.9 FTEs on, we're paying for Ester funding with benefits and salaries, that's over $1.1 million. If we are to look at rolling those positions into our bottom line, that's the next column where it says proposed budget, rolling those Ester funds in, we would be looking at a 9.1% increase to our overall budget. So that's the first preliminary projection forecast for fiscal year 25. At the last meeting, I believe, can't remember who asked me, I think it was Allison? Or maybe it was Ashley, I'm sorry, Ashley, or Kristen or Ashley, that's right. They had asked me to understand what the breakdowns were between what the categories are, what are purchase services versus purchased service property, other purchase services implies. So what I did was I actually took fiscal year 23's budget and expenses and 24's budget and 24's expenses up until the beginning of this week. And then I broke it down by those categories. So you can see where we're spending those dollars and what those categories mean. And I gave you an example of what purchased, you know, a definition of what purchased technical services are and what the roll up is. So rather than present all those little line items and all those puts and takes, I, what we do is we roll it up. So purchased technical services, what we call 5300 is a roll up number. Each one of those line items actually have an individual number and that's how we account for all of our spending. So you can see line by line where we, where we spend our dollars. 50, account 5300, purchased, purchased technical services or professional services are basically anything with specialized skills and knowledge. 5300, we would have my audit of services under this, you know, auditing services are charged here. We have, this is where Washington County, a lot of our special ed services, Washington County or Green Mountain Services get charged to this area. And that's our biggest chunk right there, which currently in fiscal year 24 was budgeted at $2.1 million. Other professional services, the same thing. And, you know, we can go through all of these if anybody has any questions. We can go through them. One thing I do want to point out, under 5400, it says utilities, that's primarily water and sewer services. Communications, just to have you understand what communications are, communications is wifi or any type of phone services, connectivity, that's throughout all the schools. Just trying to see other big categories that you, you'd have any questions on. So these are, what I did was I broke it down by category and gave you an example of what we've spent our dollars on over the last year and what we budgeted for the current year. Does anybody have any questions on the categories?
In 5500, what's tuition to private or PRIV Vermont LEAs?
That we pay to outside our district. So if we're paying for special education to go somewhere, that's all tuition outside. We also have pre-K tuition outside of our school district. That falls under that category as well.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to make sure, are you done with your presentation or?
And I just wanted to go through the categories before I move on.
Done and then see if you answered my question later.
So overall, what I'm looking at doing is I wanted to really give you an understanding of all those roll ups. How does it roll up and where do those big numbers come from? So bottom line is we are looking and we are in line with other school districts. Other school districts are between 6 and 8% that we're hearing, even higher.
Even higher. Some of the A that are even higher than that. So I would say we're probably in the lower third of what I'm hearing from other superintendents right now.
So looking at this budget, what I really want to discuss is how we move forward. What are the types of things that we are looking for for next year? What I'd like to hear from the, the board is, you know, a number that you're looking at. Lisa, come back with different types of scenarios and not to exceed percentage number. Once I hear back from you guys, I can then go back like I did last year and present several different scenarios to be able to get what you guys are looking at. So either a percentage, an overall flat percentage or not to exceed what we had last year, flat, a flat budget. I'd like to hear some, you know, direction from you guys in terms of how to forecast for fiscal year 24 and at least come up with three scenarios.
I guess this may be very unpopular, but I guess I'd like to see a list of stuff that we aren't required to teach and that we aren't required to, that we just do because it's nice to do. To answer your question though, I think that without that kind of baseline information, it's hard for us to say what's important because if you come back with that list, my next question is going to be, I want to hear from Mike over, well, we, even though it's not required, we can't do this for this reason. And maybe a priority of what we have to look at. Because I know, Mike, you're saying that 8% is not as high as other districts, but we have to focus on our district and what we're doing in the future. So we have this bond we're putting through. I know there's at least two other towns in our school district that have other bonds that they want to do for other municipal projects. I know I plan on talking with the Face and Select Board because I know we're one of them that have some other plans going on. And this is, you know, it keeps going up and up and up. And I think that we have to start looking at unpopular, or having these unpopular discussions over what's really required and what's not. That's just my, my opinion.
Lisa, could you just refresh our memory? What did our, what was our budget increase last year? Do you remember? Just so that we can have a reference.
I believe it was 6.25 and I'll double check.
Okay.
I think it was 6.25.
Cindy, go ahead.
Okay, this is just gut feeling. I don't have anything else other than just knowing how people respond in the community to the issue of money and increasing taxes. And I think that, given that in addition to this particular thing, we're going to be going for the bond vote also. I would say a low number of 5% and a high number of 8%. And, and then I think maybe then Mike and the administrative team and Lisa can give us some idea of in order to achieve any of the, anything within those levels, what we need to either eliminate or what we could keep in there, even if it wasn't an essential, but it was something we thought was very important in our district.
Danielle, you can go ahead.
I would like to understand or be educated about the impact of a increase in our budget in addition to the passage of a bond, which I know is two years out, on what that would, the impacts to the taxpayer, because it's going to be hard for me to understand how to guide any increases in budget if I don't understand how that translates into impact. And I think I mentioned this last time we met about this is a gradual learning process for all of us that are new to the board, but when constructing a budget, I don't have awareness of how my decision about saying, well, 8% seems reasonable or X percent, whatever it might be, seems reasonable. What I don't really understand the bottom line impact that would have on the community members. I can look at it from a point of what do I, as a representative of Face and think is important to the school district? And that's a really credible view, but it doesn't balance against what could my community also reasonably afford to do to meet those.
Danielle, just clarification, you're talking about like tax implications, like how much people's taxes would go up?
I know, we got good education last year about how, how the tax and you were awesome about it and educating us about how the taxes.
Just faded volume. We can't hear you. Could somebody else just talk on Zoom for a second? Just to make sure that it's not our end.
Can you hear me? Here. Listen, be okay.
Okay, we heard you guys. Danielle, did you want to try again? Are you good?
Can you hear me?
Very faintly, I can hear you a little bit.
So strange. I just am saying, no.
Go ahead, keep talking because I can.
Because I can text Mike and he can, oh, good, okay. So basically, I know we had education in the spring about how different aspects of the school budget affect taxes versus the state share and all of that. So I think I would like a little one-on-one tutorial again before I feel equipped to say what I think on this matter.
Any other questions, comments, feedback, ideas? Go ahead, Ben.
Lisa, how much are we in control of the increase? Like, how much of this is the state or insurance, just sort of, if you're going to, you know, wrap it up into a percentage of the sort of yearly increase, how much of it, if we just never increased a single dime, how much of that is like the state? Or other outside influences?
Less than 10%. When you roll up your contractual obligations, your insurance, your health benefits, your workers' comp, really bottom line, you know, if you're rolling up the contractual obligations with that, your bottom line is your operational expenses. So, so you're then putting your deferred maintenance on hold. You're then tapping more into your maintenance reserve. It's really, when you look at it, it's, we, there are some things, but then we have to make decisions. We have to make decisions, you know, what do we want to teach, what's required, what's not required, look at how many FTEs we have, but flexibility of what we really have control over.
Right, right.
Not cutting FTEs or positions, but is supplies and little, less than 10%.
So, so I just want to contextualize when we're sort of thinking about guiding principles moving forward, what we're, what we're thinking about here. And I just want to make this really apparent, right, for, for the voters too, because they're, they're trying to wrap their heads around, right, the, the budget from year to year. So we're talking about something that's less than 10% for these guiding principles. Everything else, right, is we're, we're, we're cutting into FTEs at that point. Okay. So one of the things that I guess I would like to, to, to look at is when we do sort of sit down and, you know, I really appreciate those numbers of contextually speaking, like how are we doing compared to other budgets of other school districts? What does that contextually look like? I'm also really excited about what are we getting for our money? And I'm really, you know, as I look over all of those universities that the recent graduating class got accepted to, I'm seeing some great, high-ranking universities there. What I caution all of us is, is in the sort of attempt to save a dollar or two, that we be fiscally responsible, but also keep in mind the fact that as we start making these deep cuts, we make ourselves less attractive to higher institutions and that there's no cut that doesn't have a lasting effect. So while we're sort of thinking about the short term, I also want us thinking about the long-term effects of what we're doing. And I have a, a different point of view as I talk to folks. They don't have a fear-based mindset, although, you know, again, I'm not, you know, I'm not in the, in the deep woods of Face and, I'm, I'm in Moretown. So as I talk to those folks, they're very hopeful about the future and they're very much, you know, wanting to invest in the future of their community. But what does that look like, right? So so, so I'm, I'm kind of wondering, what are we getting for the money that, that we're investing in? So, so I would love that along with the numbers.
Jonathan Young?
I just want to chime in and say that, you know, the, the conversations I have, a lot of the people in Warren that I speak with anyway, I never hear concerns about their taxes going up. But I, I've never seen a budget fail based on the money. The only budget I ever saw fail was based on some changes to the district alignment that were very unpopular. So I'm not necessarily on any kind of agreeing with any kind of course that just cuts things for the sake of cutting them so we can say we cut them. I think we need to consider all of the factors as we've already heard and what it's going to do to the, not only to attract good schools, but also good teachers and also keep kids in the district instead of having them run for the district. So I don't, I'm not, I'm not willing to get on board any kind of let's cut things because that's what we should be doing. I think we should be looking at what kind of quality education we're getting and what any raise or increase in budget will get us. And if that will improve things for our district, then we should support that. And I know I will. Anyway, that's it.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, Bobby, then life.
So preliminarily, we had Cindy throw out a couple of, a range. And I'm just wondering. Um, and I'm just wondering, eh, as you're looking at this now, is, um, if, if we didn't increase anything other than the health expenses that we have, that we will have, what kind of percentage increase are we looking at? And then, you know, so is five too low ball? To even be realistic, I mean, we're looking more, if some districts are looking at higher increases. So I think Cindy proposed what, five? Five, six? Five and eight. So five low and eight high, yeah. And from what I'm hearing, I'm wondering if we need to be looking at, well, if we have those figures and we can calculate a little higher. But I'm even thinking, you know, 10, um, because it's sounding like some districts are going to be looking at that. And just based on what you said about the healthcare increases, so I would offer that.
So I can certainly do that. Um, just ask to answer also Danielle's question. Um, next meeting, board meeting, I plan on doing the presentation of what tax, how we develop a tax rate. And if you recall, the CLA is involved, you know, with that. So I'll do that whole presentation. And what I can do is now that I, you know, if we are talking, uh, come back with high, low or maybe come back with three scenarios, then I can roll those scenarios into what the tax implication would be for each one of those. Um, and Ben, just to answer your question, remembers seventy-two percent, between seventy-one and seventy-two percent of our total budget is salaries and benefits. So you basically have twenty, between twenty-nine percent below the line. And a lot of that is, again, fixed costs that we have to pay for. So there's special education, there's, um, that we just, you know, we, we have to, that's a nut that we have to take care of. We have auditor's cost that it's, we have, we need to do, uh, leasing of central office space. We have a, an agreement for one, two more years. So there's things when you really roll all of that up, what's, unless we start looking at, um, things that we want to not continue with any longer, there's very little freedoms between supplies and periodicals. It's, it's less than 10%, so.
And I would say even with, even with, when you look at personnel, look at an elementary school. And do we have to provide instruction in all the subjects? You know, we, we, uh, I don't want to name a subject. I don't want people to have fear of that. But, uh, while we may not have to provide all the subjects, we do contractually have to provide prep time for teachers. And a lot of times that occurs, you know, for a first grade teacher through their, their special subjects. So, so there, there's all these pieces that, that perhaps the subject may not be required, but the time is needed contractually.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate the conversation so far. Um, and I, I just kind of zooming out for a second, thinking about last year, for example, the six point two percent increase. My, my memory was that that was, that was like a level services budget, right? That was basically maintaining what we already had. So, um, I, I think it's really important to have one of our figures be that. And just that we need to keep like reminding ourselves, you know, I think, well, I, I really agree with what, um, Ben was saying. That, you know, it looks like an increase, but really anything below that is actually a cut. Um, that seems like a pretty standard one that we want to have. And so in, in this, these projections, is that the six point eight nine percent other than the grant, right?
Correct, so that this six point eight has some assumptions in here.
Right.
For contractual obligations, for benefits, the benefits are in here. Um, and there are some consumables that across some of the consumable supplies, periodicals, things like that, uh, for our library, there was an increase we did of, and this is just small potatoes. But this is really across those numbers, which is less than probably, um, probably comes out to about fifty-three thousand dollars, um, is a, a three point five percent increase, three point two five percent increase. Which we can, you know, I could look at taking that out and just doing level service.
So, yeah, so for me, instead of just talking percentages, it, it feels helpful to frame it in terms of like, you know, that's, that's a pretty basic like way to think about the impact. And I think this year is weird because we're going to lose ESSER. So really the, the level services is the nine point one in some sense. Whereas six point eight nine is, is just assuming that we're going to take the full hit of the grant. So I don't know how exactly you'd want to put that, but status quo would be nine point one. Because otherwise we lose them, we're, we're, we're assuming that we're going to lose that money. Is that right?
Uh, yes, but keep, yes, it's if you're rolling the ESSER FTEs into our general fund to keep status quo where we are, yes, you would roll that in.
Yeah, so to me, kind of the, you know, level services at nine point one, the level services minus ESSER at six point eight nine. If we wanted to have another low one, like a five percent, like Cindy was mentioning, that's, you know, that can always be a good exercise because then you actually do start to see, we would need to take away this many FTEs and things like that. Which is, you know, raises some anxiety, but is also kind of a, a gut check and a reality check for folks. And then, you know, that's three scenarios, which you were saying. I, I usually like, you mentioned 10%, I usually like to see another one that's like pie in the sky, like if we could really go for it. Maybe we don't need that this year since the nine point one is already kind of keeping all the ESSER positions. And we also are in conversations about a bond, which is where the real dreaming is going to happen.
Before I go to Cindy, I just want to make sure that anybody who hasn't spoken might have, would have an opportunity if they would like, like to. Okay, so it'd be Cindy and then Ben and then you. Oh, Ashley, did you want to go? I know you had, you had. Okay, she's good. Okay, so it'll be Cindy, Ben, and then you. Okay, go ahead, Cindy.
Okay, um, first off, when I said the five percent, I understood that meant we would be looking at cuts. And as a board, that might be something that we need to at least be clear that we've considered that and we do not like it. And we do not think it's a good idea. I had not understood. I thought that the ESSER funds were in the six point one or six point nine. Um, not, I wasn't thinking of that up to the nine. So I would even say I'd go for the, uh, six percent at the low end. And that's really so that when, when we're in a position of presenting what we're doing, people will often ask us, what, well, what, what would you have to cut if you wanted to bring that down? What would you do? And at least we'd have some idea what it is we're talking about. And that it is not something this board feels good about. And for these reasons, because of the, because of the look of the school, the way of the popularity of the school. One of the things we hear complaints about are people leaving this district to go somewhere else and how we deal with that. Well, we deal with that by providing a, um, more cohesive, sort of a stronger, uh, well-thought-out and a well-put-together budget and then with that, uh, the programs that we present and the teachers that we have and all the stuff that goes into that. So I, you know, I, I just was really trying to find a number that I felt like if I went to my community, I could say, yeah, well, if we were really going to cut, then we'd have to do this, but we don't think that that's a good idea of what we're doing or whatever. I like the idea of moving my idea to six percent and to nine percent and to 10%. There you go. That's it. And that just allows Lisa some leeway to say, yeah, well, if I do the budget at this, this is what it is. If I do it at this, you gotta look at this a little bit. I think the whole ESSER thing is really problematic for us. But anyway, that's all. So thanks, everybody.
I, I, I think I also agree with Cindy about the fact that, um, the, the six percent in my mind and communication, sorry to be nitpicky about this, but communication is key when we're talking about numbers here with community. Um, that, that, uh, six percent, um, is really the, the level funded. Because of the fact that when I think about the ESSER funding, that's coming from the feds, is it not? So if it's coming from the feds and we're all of a sudden taking that on, that would be added expense. So that's not level funding, that's us taking that on. So when I think about what, what we want to communicate to the, to the community, um, uh, what, I, I, I really think about something that, that doesn't include, um, uh, the ESSER funding, um, that, that we would roll that in. That would be something that would be added on to if we chose to, to go that route, but I would love to see those figures nonetheless.
Yes, let's, I want to clear up on the language. So level funding versus level service. So ESSER, the level service, if we were to roll and keep level service that we're offering with, we're paying those FTEs with the federal funding of ESSER dollars, that's level, level service. Level funding is, you're right, we are paying for these positions from federal funds. They are not on the, the school board budget. Are what we call our general fund. So those dollars, if we decide to keep those nine point nine positions, those dollars would then roll of, oh, you know, onto the general fund and it's over one point one million dollars, salaries and benefits. Added on to, yes. And that's where you come up with the nine point nine. So we would be continuing the, the, that level service, but absorbing that extra cost of the one point one million dollars.
And just to quickly add, if anybody wanted to reference it, like he was asking, it is on that, uh, board report that was sent out. That's mentioned in there, that it was included.
Just wanted to say, um, just a couple of clarifications. One, believe it or not, Ben, Faceton does have, uh, water, uh, sewer, uh, we do have power. Uh, so we're not totally in the sticks, uh, but, uh, I, 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 I do get out once in a while and I do talk to folks, believe it or not, a lot of people know that. Um, and I don't know anybody who's happy with their tax bill. Um, and, but that doesn't mean, as Jonathan said, that they aren't willing to vote for it. But we, we did have a bond that they didn't vote for. And so I think that that's the, the thing that we need to keep in mind. And so when I brought up earlier, you know, unpopular, that we should take a look at a list of what we're not required to teach. I, I think in this case, it's not saying that we won't vote for it, it's not saying that we can't defend it. But we, we, these are the types of conversations we're supposed to be having. And, and I agree with everybody. I think we should put forward the budget that we think is the best for the school. Um, but, you know, take, last year, we talked about the, the, the admin office, you know, and that's a big part of that. I have, somebody asked me not long ago, why, why aren't staff working from home like a lot of other people? Or why aren't they working at different schools? I'm not going to defend that, that's what we voted on. But those are kind of questions that people are paying attention to and looking at. And I think that's what we got to do here. I, I don't want, like Mike said, I don't want to cherry pick one subject. But I know there's probably a couple of subjects that we teach that, you know, we might have to look at and we might have to talk about. Um, but anyway, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. I'm not saying that cut. I'm just saying we should be looking at these so we can defend them going, going forward. Yeah, I ju, yeah, thank you.
Clarification that neither Witsfield nor Faceton has municipal sewer. We're working on it though.
I just want to, um, I, I just want to say thank you to everybody. I really, this discussion just was really clear. And, um, I appreciate the thoroughness of the, the budget that you had put through and just having this conversation. I'm like, all right, I think I'm understanding this. So thank you to everybody. Um, and I agree with everything that was said. Um, I also like Cindy's idea of, you know, going with, um, what would we have to cut if we needed to cut something, what's, uh, the, the level funding or level service? Once you said level funding, level service, like that made total sense. So we would be absorbing that cost. So, um, hopefully I know that we'll be able to come forward with, um, the best budget for our district. So, thanks.
Anybody else? Lisa, do you feel informed from this discussion?
I, I also took notes. We'll come back with three scenarios, um, and, uh, I will work with our admin team for a list of, developing a list of required, um, teaching, uh, offerings. And I will also, um, include that in when I'm doing the three scenarios, the, the tax impact as well. Okay, and I'll come up with a, a true percentage for you for below the line, so you, so you know that. Right now, it's off my.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
It's like less than 10%, I think it's like nine point six.
I'd suggest that Lisa give an update on, you know, the, the formula that's used because there were some changes this year. Uh, we're anticipating the, the yield rate to go down, so there's going to be some impacts. And one of the challenges with the system is we don't really know what that tax increase looks like until later in the year. Yeah, um, and, uh, so, uh, Lisa's predecessor, Michelle was in the office on Monday. And, uh, she was, she's doing some consulting for some other districts as well. And, uh, Michelle's probably the statewide expert on, uh, the formula and the implementation, how it works. And she, Michelle told me on Monday, she said, Mike, I didn't understand the changes. I had to actually call some people I know around the state and, and it took me a couple of days to understand the changes. And that's probably the number one expert in the state who, who did not understand it fully. Uh, so, so, so that it, it's very complicated and it does have implications, not just for us, but, uh, statewide this year. So that's also going to be a factor that plays into it that we don't fully understand right now.
January that we get that? December first, okay. December first, it's not always on December first, so we get.
Danielle, did you have your hand up for a question?
I did, real quick. Um, I, I don't, I don't know who said it, but the idea of the ESSER-funded positions, when you break them out, can you also indicate? Because I think I remember you saying some of those positions were funded with ESSER funds, but they're, they're, um, positions that we had or we needed, we filled some vacancies with those. So there were probably some, um, existing positions that were covered with ESSER funds for a little while to help, uh, you know, pad the budget. I don't know, that's the wrong word, but you know what I mean? Um, if you could indicate if there's any of those positions that would be normal positions that we would have funded with our normal budget, that would be really helpful, like start them or something when you do that budget, Lisa, that would be basically helpful.
And to help me understand, you want to be able to understand, we added additional positions with the ESSER fund, funding. We originally, last year, we funded thirteen point four positions, um, from ESSER funding. And with some vacancies, we have not filled those vacancies, so we're down to nine point nine. Um, what I could do is provide a list of the positions that we are funding from ESSER funds. Um, those were, um, additional positions that we hired and use the federal formula funds for that.
Okay, I thought that we had said last time that there was some vacant positions that these were, um, rolling into to cover, but maybe.
Are you saying you're wondering if there's vacant positions within the district that these ESSER-funded positions would fulfill and therefore be covered by the existing budget?
Yes, thank you.
Again, that depends on, um, there's a lot that plays into that. So it depends on the license of the individual, what they could teach, um, bumping privileges. So there's, there's a lot of, it's complicated, it's not a simple answer.
I just want to clarify, which is why I asked her earlier, the HR person about that, because it would be helpful towards making our budget.
These we're looking at, we're also looking at, we sent out early retirement incentive letters on Friday, they're due December first. So we're trying to get that date moved up so we can see what those areas are and possible switching. Like I said, uh, before, you know, if, if, uh, we can consider, uh, reducing through attrition, which is my preference, uh, always and, and not impacting individuals and people. Uh, but if we can get that information earlier, if it, if it's, you know, a first grade teacher and, and, you know, but in, in, uh, one of our buildings that only has one first grade teacher, we can't get that position. But if it's something else that we can maybe move somebody around, that's something that's going to factor into, uh, future presentations from Lisa, is once we have those details.
Everybody feel good, exciting, budget talk, yay, right? Did it put you to sleep yet, Ashley? Okay. So we're on to, um, our next item, which is policy first read. Um, so does anybody have questions? I think the way we've been doing it is, does anybody have questions or certain things that should be pointed out? Anybody questions? It's going to be a walk in the park this time, right? No questions? It's class size, travel reimbursement, fiscal management and general.
It's class size, travel reimbursement, fiscal management and general financial accountability, now that sounds exciting. As well as capitalization of assets, like that is. That's exciting. Any, any questions or comments on these, on these policies? If, go ahead.
Want to make a comment, doing the board warrants, I see how hard everybody's working and how accurate they are. And how many safety checks we have to make sure that nothing goes out that shouldn't go out. And I look at the expenses and there's nothing wild, these are things that are expenses that are part of running a district. There, there's, you know, every once in a while, I'll look at something, oh, maybe that, you know, and it'll be like fifty nine dollars, but. Um, we do have some, there are some areas of high expenditure, but there's a lot of fiscal responsibility, so I commend our. Financial team and the superintendent.
We really appreciate, I really appreciate the board who looks at the details of that, I think it's exceptional oversight. And, uh, I, I, I always stay out of the finances and, and leave, uh, leave that to the experts, but, uh, it, it does. I, I, I think that's a, a good example of why we have the board come in and look at that, uh. It's, it's, it's very good, and I will say to Kristen's point, some of those board policies that we're looking at is actually, or is, uh, Tori and. Uh, Danielle can attest to, if, if you're having trouble sleeping at night, you may want to take them with you, they're a sure cure for insomnia.
So no questions, everybody feels good about these policies, everybody's good, we're good to warn them for. Awesome, great, perfect, moving on. Okay, so we're going to move on to action items, so our first action item is to approve for adoption. Um, F nine, G twelve, G thirteen and F thirty-four.
Make a motion to approve. The following policies for adoption, F nine, transportation, G twelve, title one. Can't even read the other word, comparability, G thirteen, animal dissection and F thirty-four meal charge.
Is there a second?
A second then.
Okay, um, any question or discussion on this? Oh yeah, go ahead, yep.
I have a question about the meal charge, um, action item and just exactly what does that entail, is it charging for school meals?
Policy, uh, because we receive federal funds and, and, uh, the state also receives. Funding, right now, there is no charge for schools, but we're still required to have a policy that explains how. Meals will be charged and what you would do if students and adults went into the red in their balances, even though that's not in the foreseeable future. We still have to have a policy so that when auditors come through and, and check, uh. Go through the finance office, they, they, they will ask regardless of what the state does with universal meals, they'll ask to see a copy of the policy.
So just double it, we're not charging for meals, we're not anything, it's just basically, we have to have this policy for federal rules. Ellie, if you want a lot of information on it, it's two meetings ago. Okay, um. Yeah, go ahead.
Just add for the benefit of the student who just asked that question, there is a caveat at the. Head of that policy that acknowledges what Dr. Mike just said about the fact that the, the school district is not charging currently. So that, that's the very header to the policy.
It's, it's very confusing with all the free meals that we're doing, but we got to have it, okay, any other questions or comments? Is there any objection to approving, um, the following policies for adoption, F nine, G twelve, G thirteen and F thirty-four? Objection or abstentions? Okay, not hearing any or seeing any, that will pass, we are moving right along with these policies. Guys are doing a great job. The, um, next action item is going to approve for warning, B three, board member conflict of interest and. Uh, deletion of policy E six, safety and security of school facilities, just as a refresher, the board does have to approve. Any deletion or removing of any policies and this particular policy E six replaced. It was replaced by. One that we approved, like one of our first meetings. So does anybody like to make this motion? Don't all jump. You had to just use your microphone.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, move to approve the following policies for writing, for warning, uh, B three. Board member conflict of interest and the deletion of policy E six, safety and security of school facilities.
Is, is there a second? JB, a second, any questions or comments on this? Go ahead, Life, and then Ben, sorry, you were in my peripheral.
Um, so, uh, I hate to do this, but the conflict of interest policy, I just think we should think about a little bit. Um, there's been some changes made since the original and my. I, I, I think they might have brought up other problems, so originally. The way it was written, I remember we talked about. Um, you know, if, if a board member, we, we eventually determined that either a board member or a member of the public could submit a complaint. And if they submitted a complaint, then we had, we needed to talk about it. And then if, um, the majority of the board, board, um, voted, then it would, you know, go forward that way. And I think there was a concern that potentially we could get a lot of superfluous complaints, potentially, like. The, just, you know, members of the public could just be like throwing tons of complaints away and we would just have to keep talking about them. So we talked about adding something that kind of allowed a little bit of a, a filter there. Um, and so I think that's what the red language is now in number nine. Um, that basically says the chair, the, the vice chair and the superintendent will, will look at the complaints as they come in. Um, but the problem is, I think that this language now kind of just takes it out of the board's hands in some ways. Now, now, it's, it's a little bit more than a filter, that group is like deciding whether the, the complaint, whether there's a conflict in fact exists. So I feel like it kind of went too far in a corrective direction, what I would suggest, um, I sent an email to this effect is just that. Um, first of all, if a board member makes a complaint, then it should be on the old track, it should come to the board. If a member of the public makes a complaint, then that group should decide whether it comes to the board or not. They should let the board know that they, you know, made a call on something. And I just think the language there, just saying that a conflict in fact exists, I think it should be something like, you know, possibly exists. I, I think what we're trying to do is just not allow complaints that are just completely. Um, you know, have very little standing. Um, to end up taking up a lot of the board's time, in which case that group can be like, nope, and then they can inform us, hey, this complaint came in. Um, it really didn't have a, a strong rationale, so. Um, it was dismissed, and then if a member of the public, like, really wanted to come to another board member and be like, can you, like, book this complaint for it? And if they convinced even one board member, then we would at least talk about it. Um, it seems to me like that would be a better balance, this, this seems to go a little far towards, um, from where it was.
Um, so I just want to quickly point out, I hear what you're saying, Life, but, um. Some of that language, the justified and if a conflict, conflict does exist, we grabbed from ten. So if you want to reconsider language in nine, I think that's going to lead to a reconsideration. In the language from ten and that was model policy, um. Yeah, we can keep, I mean, we can keep looking at this, I will listen to the board and your guys' preference, but just a heads up that if we change nine, we should probably look at ten too.
You know, I, I've got the, the same, um. You know, issue that, that life has, which is essentially, we, we both have family members, um, in, uh, the district, employed by the district. Um, I take an opposite stance, uh, from life, uh, which is not a surprise, but, um. In the fact that, um, I think. We've spent some time on this leg, uh, uh, on this piece of, uh, legislation. We've spent some time, uh, on, on trying to get this right. Um, we asked for there to be some reasonableness to, um, how this moves forward. Um, there is now reasonable language in here, um, I'm not seeing an overcorrection. Um, although, um, you, you know, the, the board chair, the vice chair and superintendent. Um, being an overcorrection on, on any kind of level, taking that away from the, the board is. Uh, that's sort of an interesting premise, because I'm not sure how the board chair, the vice chair and the superintendent take those decisions away from the board. Um, I am looking at something that, uh, is ready to move and ready to go. Um, I'm not sure that we have to keep fiddling with it, um, each and every board meeting to then come back to see if everybody. Unanimously agrees that this is, uh, something that we can all move forward on, I think if we have a majority vote, I think. I think this is ready to, to move forward, so, um. I think I'd like to hear what others have to, to think about this, but I think, um, when I look at the hard work that's been put into this already. And then the revisions that have been put into this already, it satisfies what we asked for. Um, and now I think it's, it's ready to come to a vote, so. So I guess. I appreciate all the hard work that Tori and Danielle has done, I, I guess I misunderstood as well, um. I think this actually creates more conflict and it creates more politics, because you're really leaving it up to the. Chair and the vice chair and the superintendent to really decide, says evaluate. I'd want to know what the definition of that is, and now we're getting into, you know, dragging this out, um. I think that. This in fact could create just more politics within board, I, I, I agree though with Life that I don't think we should be, you know, every time someone sends an email. Says something, that could happen every meeting, you know, that could happen every week, it's kind of, you know. I think for me, conflict of interest just comes down to dependency, um, and I think that. I almost think nine should just be, be completely eliminated in a way, I think that when you. If there's a conflict that arises, I think it should just be brought to the board and we vote whether we want to talk about it or not. Um, but I'm just one member, and I guess I misunderstood the last meeting to this meeting, or from the last time we talked about it, I thought that's what. The direction we were going, so anyway, thank you.
Yeah, and without taking up too much time, I just second everything that was just said.
Does anybody else want to talk? Or, go ahead, Life.
Um, yeah, I think. I think I agree with that too, that if, um. If it's too complicated to try to, to worry about superfluous, I, I'll just point out that, um, I just looked back at the original. Model policy and that, um, piece in number ten that matches the, the red from number nine. That wasn't in the original policy, so I think that's something we inserted as well. So again, the original policy just said, if somebody makes a claim, the board talks about it. So I think, um, going from there to the board may, may or might, may not even know there was a claim made, I think is, is too far, so. Um, an easy fix would be just to go back to the model, which is what Mike suggested. Take out nine and take out that extra language in ten as well.
Ashley.
Yeah, I agree with Mike as well, I think we need to simplify that, I don't, I don't like the idea of not knowing about things. Um, I don't know, I like the model policy, I guess.
If we take out the stuff we added, then there's nothing stopping. Any random email from just coming to the board, which is why we put that stuff in, so just, just to keep in mind. That's the direction.
And, and Tori, thank you for your hard work on this, I really mean that, I sent you an email thanking you for your work on this stuff and.
I, I'm not taking offense to any of it. I welcome the input, it's fine, thank you.
I just. I think for me, my concern is just creating a, just another problem with, if it's against the chair or vice chair, so if there was language that said, okay, well, if it gets. The vice chair or the chair, then it goes to the, and I'm making this up, don't, don't take this, but like, it goes to the. Next senior person on the board or it goes to the, I don't know, so, so, you know, there's some other policy or another line in there that says that, um, but.
Um. The line like the last part of number eight? Sorry, I'm just pointing it out, like for discussion purposes, see if it meets what you want.
No, I, I just mean that, I, I, I think my concern is just that this just creates more, more. Conflict of a different definition of conflict, so, or more politics, so I think that maybe we should just pause on it.
Um, I've thought about this for a while and I definitely hear and agree with, um, where Mike and Life were coming from and felt. In the past, from my own past experience, how I would feel about having different, um. Administration and leadership up here and how, um. I might have not felt settled, having it be all in leadership and administration, um. And so I guess I keep going back and forth and, um, you know, do we put it out on? The leadership team to make that decision, or do we bring a, do we bring them all back to the board? And both of them seem very heavy, um, I like Life's idea of, um. The. If the conflict of interest rises within the board table, then we take it up as a discussion. And then, but at the same time, if a community member is saying, hey, we think this is a conflict of interest. We're, I mean, we know, we all know a lot of community members and it's easy to persuade us to bring all of those, you know. If, you know, so and so brought it to you, Life, and they didn't get to you, so they're going to go to Bobby or they're going to go, maybe they'll go to the student rep or whoever, right? Then it could still come to the table just as easily, so there needs to be that, um. There, there needs to be some sort of, we can't take every single issue and to, at the table. So I'm not even sure where to go with this, but I definitely agree, and. I also hear what you're saying, Mike, that like adding all of that and having it be put on. The, the leadership team as making the decision, like that does create conflict within the boards. To some degree, you know, and it can create that hostility, so.
I would like to point out, sorry to interrupt you, Kelly, um, we do elect our board leadership team. Signaling that we do trust them to make these decisions and steps, um. And my other little cause for, for concern, I'm sure you didn't mean it this way, Mike. But we can't just put this on pause because we do need to do something with this policy, so like, at the end of this discussion. Danielle and I need some guidance on like, are we taking it back and what are we changing, or are we doing a vote to just push it forward or whatever, like, we need. A next step, can't just wait on it.
Jonathan Young, you had your hand up.
Yes, I, I wanted to say a couple of things, one is, I totally agree with Kelly, is that we can't always guarantee that the leadership team and the superintendent are going to be. Um, people we can fully one hundred percent trust with this kind of decision-making, and some of us weren't here when there, that was indeed the case. So it wasn't long ago when I would have bristled at the idea that those, that the people in charge of that decision-making would have been making that decision without my knowledge. Uh, secondly, I would say that only a couple times in my, uh, so far that I've been on the board, have there been any real? Uh, cases and the board handled them quite well, it's not like this happens on a daily basis, I'm not sure, we need to change anything, anyway, there you go.
Oh, let's JB and then, because he hasn't spoken yet.
Get back in on what Jonathan said, uh, the prior policy, do we ever have any issues with it before? Okay, and so we're here, why, because we had.
I think it had to be updated. So that's why, because we are.
Asked to update. Asked to update it. It was expired for simplicity purposes.
We had, the board had received one, one email in, in the meantime. Um, okay, that was my only question.
Dee, I don't think you've spoken yet. Have you? No, I don't think so. Go ahead, Cindy. You're muted. You're still muted.
Um, it seems to me that, that we, what we're really talking about trying to do is, is simplify a sort of a complex, a potentially complex issue. The first policy we read a couple of weeks ago or meetings ago at least. The issue was whether it was submitted in writing and did email count as writing? And then we got into looking at that. And then it was, and then it was, did a second person need to have signed it or not signed it? Remember, we talked about that for a little while. And then it was, was it a, another person from the community that could sign it or not sign it? Or a board member could sign it or not sign it. And then it became, well, then who did that go to once that happened? And then we got into this whole business. I, I would just like to propose to you wonderful folks working on this policy. What we really want to see is, is, is a, a policy that basically says. If you have a concern, whether you're a community member or another board member or a staff person. If you have a concern that somebody on the board has a conflict of issue, interest in a particular issue. That they need to submit in writing, whether it's email or handwriting, you know, we can specify that. And it needs to be signed by a second person, whether that's a board person or a community person. That's an issue that we need to decide. And then it goes to the leadership of the board for presentation to the board. If, if those two, if two people has written and signed that, then I think the board ought to know that there's at least two people. One may even be another board member who have a concern about this particular issue, whatever the particular one is. And that that's pretty straightforward and, and that mostly it's a, it's a board business thing. The superintendent uh, works with the leadership on the board and sort of is, kind of helps with determining what comes to us and doesn't. But anyway, that's what I think. I just think that, that we need, it's, it's gotten so confusing. I have trouble when I read it now, being completely sure. What the process is. So thanks.
Here's the question. Is, is copying somebody on that email count as that person signing too?
Not to me, it doesn't. I think two need to sign it, whether they sign it as an email, you know, whether they indicate to acknowledge their participation in this concern. What are the ways that gets done? I don't know legally or not. I think you need two people. In order to bring something like that to the board, you need to have two people who are agreeing that's an issue.
Okay, we're going to finish up rounds of um, if anybody has a second comment and then we're going to go to vote. Ben, I know you had your hand up. Go ahead.
So uh, um, and I, I have just a couple of questions to you, Kristen. Yeah, I'll just, I'll choose one person and, and you're a very knowledgeable. So I'm just. This, this is only a test of the emergency broadcast system. This is only a test. Here we go. So. Kristen, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, and maybe I should be asking Tori this. So for, forget it, Chris, and I'll ask Tori this. So Tori, um, uh. When we go through with this, let's just say we go through the, with, with the amendment or without the amendment. It doesn't really matter, but for whatever reason, uh, an allegation's been made. And it's agreed upon. And then all of a sudden, we're going to, according to this policy, we're going to go through the conflict of interest claim against the board member. Okay? And we found that yes, we all agree that the uh, person has a conflict of interest. And let's, let's just say, and I'm just throwing a person out there because I know that this person doesn't have any sort of conflict of interest. But let's just say that um, uh, my good friend, uh, JB uh, happens to have a daughter who's employed in the school district. His daughters are, are very young. If, if in fact, he does have found to have a conflict of interest in the fact that he's voting on their salaries. Does uh, JB then have to recuse himself from that vote?
So I think Mike might be able to support me on this better too. But if you look at number 10, I. You, that person is strongly encouraged to.
Is that person?
They will be frowned at, but we cannot forcefully remove them. So I understand.
And we cannot forcibly remove them because they are in fact an elected official. Is that correct?
That's how I understand it, but I'll have Mike chime in as well.
Sorry, go ahead, Mike.
We asked Pietro Lynn, the board's attorney, and he, that, that, that was his response, that uh, elected officials, it is in the end, the board can say, we think it's conflict of interest. We think you should not vote or you should be off the board, whatever it is. Uh, they're an elected official, elected by the public and it's, it's their decision in the end.
And really what this is about is uh, essentially, how are we going to go about? If we feel that there's a conflict of interest, a censure, which is essentially a political stain on the person. So um, it's not to force that person to do one thing or another. The issue that I find is this is a political uh, and not a legal document, meaning, or excuse me, uh, procedure. So when we're coming to a political um, resolution on this and not a legal one. We are also thinking about the political motivations. So we do need to have a mechanism. Right? Because I want everyone to imagine themselves, if we can imagine ourselves in a previous administration with a previous board. We should also imagine ourselves in a future board around election time. Where somebody might want somebody else out and has the votes necessary to give that person a political censure just before elections. So this can work as a double-edged sword. We need some protections around this being used as a tool. And so that's what I'm cautioning everyone. It's not a legal tool anyway. It's a political tool. And so because of that, we need some mechanism by which we're not going to start using this. Even as a future board against particular board members that we may want to discredit in front of the community during election time. That's what I'm sort of previewing for this board. It's not the board that I see now in front of us. It's the board that I can't see in front of us.
Head life.
Um, well, since we were talking about Pietro, I just want to clarify, just look back at the emails and um. He clarified that we only need one complaint. So based on the model policy, which was our old policy, which is our current policy. It's a one complaint from either a board member or a member of the public. That's where it stands. He also opined that the, the complaint that we've received was not valid. So I think that's what kind of got us into this weird realm of should somebody else be deciding? Really, my understanding under the old and under the current rules is that the complaint that we received, we should have voted on. We should have taken up as a board. So we didn't follow our policy in that instance. In any case, I think the model policy is what it is. And um. I, I hear what you're saying, Ben. It could get ugly at some point. It could get weird, but that's just speculation. It hasn't in the past. And I don't know if, I assume if it was happening in weird ways in other places, that probably the, the state um, association would change the model policy. So I think maybe we're overthinking it. And so I'm uh, I'd like to make a motion if I can um, to amend. Um, what we, what the, the motion on the table is that uh, is that cool? Can I do that? Is this the moment? Um, so I'd just like to amend the motion on the table to, cool. Thank you. Um, to just read, uh, move to approve the following policy for warning. Oh no, it's just we'll say move to delete policy E6, right?
Still has to say move to approve the policy for warnings. We have to warn the fact that we're deleting the policy.
Okay. Move to approve the following policy for warning, deletion of policy E6, safety and security of school facilities.
Friend. No, I just, the question is, I don't think we're deleting the policy. We're just not voting on it, right?
So deletion of policy E6 replaced a policy that we already approved. So we have to get rid of this one and the board has to approve. No, it's okay. The board has to approve all deletion of policies. Okay, just one second. So the amendment is to move to approve. The policy for warning, it's deletion of policy E6, safety and security of school facilities. Is there a second on that amendment?
Good question. If this goes through, then we go back to the original.
No, the board member conflict of interest goes back to the committee. So Mike, Mike Bishop will second. Is there any questions or comments about the amendment? And if you're on Zoom, I have you minimized, so just yell at me. Ben, do you have a question or comment?
Uh, I would urge everybody to uh, defeat that amendment. Um, and the reason why is because uh, I want everybody to follow the chain here of what's happened. Who's asking for this? Why they're asking for this? And what's going to happen as a result? So um, keep in mind uh, what's happening here. Um, and also keep in mind uh, in addition to that, as soon as this happens. We're, we're, we're going to see, we're going to see this pop up almost immediately. So um, I, I urge people to defeat this.
I have, I have a question, Kristen.
Yes.
If this goes forward and we all vote to just send the conflict of interest back. I'm still not clear on what the board wants to see. So is this discussion end after that or no?
Um, I honestly don't know. I mean, I think that I, I have no idea. It might have to be on an agenda for a discussion to see what, what's going to be done uh, for it. Okay, so we're going to, any other questions or comments before we vote just on the amendment? Okay, we're going to do, go ahead, Danielle.
Just want to make sure that what I was just reading on the screen was that we were amending the deletion of a policy that we've already replaced. So, so I, I'm confused why, um, I don't know who it was that just spoke, but why they were saying that, that we should not. Approve this deletion when we've already approved the replacement for this.
Danielle, the, the motion on the table is to basically send conflict of interest back to us.
Okay, so I was confusing with that, with the motion. Got it.
Okay, any other questions, comments before we vote just on the amendment?
I have one quick one, just to give uh, Victoria a little clarification. My understanding after the discussion was um. That the conflict of interest would go back. And if we can't edit it now, which is what the situation is, is that we uh, send it back and have number nine be removed. That was seen like that was the general consensus and going back to the.
No, I don't, I don't think that that was the general, there was a lot of discussion. That was one idea that was.
General was a wrong choice of words. We all should.
I think we'll just have to continue the discussion at another meeting is if this motion goes forward is going to be. Thanks for talking, Marlena.
We're going to go ahead and vote just on the amendment. We're going to do a roll call. Do you want to bring up your, I screen share the tally sheet. Okay, that's totally cool. Okay. Ellie. You want me? Okay, Lincoln.
As well.
Dylan. Jones, Naomi. Yes. Ashley. And I can't see you, so.
Um, I'm voting yes on the amendment.
Bobby. JB. Maybe he's a no. Cindy. Cindy, are you muted? Is she there? You're, yeah, you're, you're still muted. You can do a thumbs down.
Yes.
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 Jonathan Young.
We're just wanting to do, to warn the deletion of policy E6, correct?
No, it's to, this means that the policy for conflict of interest is going back to the. Uh, committee. Cause we, the original motion was to approve it for warning and this. So we've removed the approve the conflict of interest policy. So if this gets approved, then the policy goes back to the committee. And if it doesn't, so this is a yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Jake is not here. Ben.
No.
Marlena.
Yes.
Okay. Life. Life is yes. Uh, Tori. I can't see her.
I, I think I want to abstain on this one.
Okay. Danielle.
I also want to abstain because I'm part of the committee.
Okay, um, Mike Bishop. Bishop say yes. And Kelly. Okay, so um, that amendment passed. So the motion now will be to approve for warning the deletion of. E6. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I just want to apologize to the crew because I honestly think I was the one that like. Originally got us off of the model policy. So now my advocacy is that we go back to the model policy. So I'm sorry for wasting all that time. And I also just want to say that um, when I said that we didn't follow the, our current policy because we never voted on the last conflict of interest claim. Just to be clear, if we were to ever vote on that, I would vote that it was not a conflict of interest. I don't think it's a conflict of interest, Ben. And that's in part because that's what Pietro said. So that's fine. We just, we didn't follow process. But just to be clear, I don't have any um, agenda about, about that bit. Uh, I think our, our committee is meeting soon and it's going to be fun to work together. So I just want to clear that up with you and also just generally say sorry to everybody for, for that big tangent, wasting lots of time. And hopefully the model policy will come in. Thanks a lot to, to the committee members as well.
So we're getting another tally sheet up so that we can vote to approve the deletion. Uh, thank you. E6. Just one second. For anybody who doesn't know, the V SBA conference on Friday, a group of students will be presenting the Harkness program during lunch. So I just want to put that out there. Very exciting. Very proud. It's awesome. And their state across country this weekend as well in Thetford. Excellent. And boys soccer plays Saturday. What time? Do you know?
Three.
Okay, where?
Home.
Oh, perfect. What? Girl soccer is Friday at three. Awesome. Okay, so. We're, yes, I'll be in Thetford. Dress warm, bring hot chocolate. Okay, we're going to, the motion is to move to approve the following policy for warning, deletion of policy E6, safety and security of school facilities. We're going to do a roll call. Ellie. You can abstain if you want to. It's totally. Lincoln. Dylan. Dylan. Dylan's a yes. Naomi. Sure. Totally can. Ashley.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, Bobby. JB. Cindy.
Yes.
Um, Jonathan Young.
Yes.
Um, Ben.
Yes.
Marlena.
Yes.
Life.
Yes.
Tori.
Yes.
Danielle. I can't. She's saying I I she's. Danielle, are you a thumbs up? I missed it.
I'm, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mike Bishop. Mike's a S and Kelly. Okay, that is has been approved for warning. Awesome. Um, okay, so consent agenda. Would anybody like to make that exciting motion of the consent agenda?
Um, a move to approve it as written.
Okay, is there a second? Bobby, um, any objection to approving the consent agenda? Not seeing any or hearing any that will pass. So communication, Tori, it looks like you're going to write it. Um, I just need an editor. Who wants to? Come on, let's go. It's, oh, J, okay, JB, and which means you're gonna write it next time. Okay. Perfect. Um, so next thing is executive session. The one thing I do want to point out is that. In the leadership report, under general reminders and information, there's some stuff about. Snow days, early dismissals to sign up for the board recap. And also we put in about the bonds, um, public meeting schedules. So just just FYI. Um, okay, so I would be looking for a motion to enter executive session and anybody like to make the motion.
Got moved.
Is there a second? Second, any um, discussion? Question? Okay, is there any objection to approving the motion? Not hearing any or seeing any that will pass. Uh, Mike sent out a Zoom link, so. Everybody should, who's on Zoom, go ahead and um, find that link.
Kristen, will you call me when? You come out of.
Carol, I will email. How about if I just email you whenever we're done? And then you don't, I don't have, you don't have to come back because we're just gonna adjourn.
Okay, if that works for you, because I can.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's totally, that's totally fine.